Firm as the earth thy gospel stands, my Lord, my hope, my trust. If I am found in Jesus' hands, my soul can there be lost. His honor is engaged to save the meanest of thy sheep. All that is heavenly Father gave, his hands should curiously keep. Nor death nor hell shall they remove his favorites from his breast. In thee, dear Boozom of his love, Most kind and loving heavenly Father, we thank thee for being here with us and among us. We pray that thou wilt be our strength, our guide, our great shepherd to lead forth thy sheep. Bring us, dear Lord, by a way that we know not. For the ways that we know are the ways of sight and the ways of sins and the ways of this earth. Keep us away from that. Let us see that thou, and thou alone, art the way, as well as the truth and the life. We thank thee that thou hast given us place to meet.
Yes.
We thank thee that thou hast given us strength and health to be here. We pray thou would open thy word not just to our minds, but to our hearts, that we might feel thy presence amongst us today. For it's in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Last month, we looked at some verses in the first chapter of the Gospel of John. And we skipped down from verse five to verse fourteen, so I think we ought to go back and get what we skipped, beginning at verse six. There was a man sent from God whose name was John. That's right, John the Baptist. John, the apostle's gospel doesn't tell us much about old John other than, or his beginnings, other than that he was sent of God. But if we turn over to Luke, we get a fill-in, if you will, of the story, one that will tell us more about this fellow. Chapter one, verse five of Luke's Gospel. There was, in the days of Herod, the king of Judah, a certain priest named Zacharias. I want you to stop right there and note something. It wasn't just any priest, it was a certain priest. The Lord had marked out Zacharias before the foundation of the world to be the father of this one that was to come. A certain priest named Zacharias. Zacharias was not an uncommon name among the Jews at those times. You know, you had the prophet Zechariah, and many times, they named the kids after prophets, after others in the family, as we shall see with John. Well, this wasn't an uncommon name, but this was a certain priest named Zacharias of the course of Abiah, and his wife was of the daughters of Aaron, also of the priesthood. You know, if you go back and read in the book of Exodus and Leviticus about the priest, you got Moses who was called to deliver Israel out of Egyptian bondage, and his brother Aaron was called to be the great high priest over the people. God was going to reveal to Moses on the Mount Sinai, not only all the law, as we think about the Ten Commandments, but also all the ceremonies, all the feast and everything. And in the course of these sacrifices, they were to be offered by the priest, who were to be the sons of Aaron and none other. And I believe if you'll go back there and read, you'll find that they were not to take wives out of any other tribe. That's the only tribe that was forbidden for them to take a wife out of another tribe. If you were of the tribe of Manasseh, you could take a wife from the tribe of Benjamin. You were of Judah, you could take it from Ephraim, didn't matter. But not the sons of Aaron. They must be pure. So Elizabeth, who was of the daughters of Aaron, was married to a certain Zacharias, who was a priest. And it says, "They were both righteous before God, walking in all the commandments and ordinances of the Lord blameless." And unless we get it in our, lest we get it in our minds that, well now, how could they do that? I know I can't walk in the commandments. You gotta remember, Job was a perfect man. Paul says, "Concerning righteousness, touching the law, I was blameless." These are walking in the outward commandments and ordinances, not, it doesn't mean they had a clean heart by nature. They were righteous before God because God made them righteous. It's not the keeping of commandments, neither is it the keeping of ordinances that make us righteous. If it were so, we could truthfully say with the apostle, there's none righteous, no, not one, right? That's just the way it is. We, in our own strength, in our own power, and with our own exertion, cannot keep either the commandments or the ordinances of God. Now, we can go through the motions, but you gotta remember something. It's not just outward obedience. Outward obedience is not enough. Jesus, look at what he said in what's called the Sermon on the Mount, Matthew 5, 6, and 7. He said, "You've heard it said, 'By them of old times you shall not kill,' excuse me, 'or you will do no, you should do no murder.'" I tell you, whoever hated that is his brother. He's a murderer. You've heard it said, "By them of old times, thou shalt not commit adultery." But I tell you, whoever looketh, whoever looks on a woman, to lust after her. And ladies, that goes vice versa as well. You've already committed adultery in your heart. See, you don't have to actually do the act in order to be guilty. It's the intent of the heart. Now, you don't know the intent of my heart, and I don't know the intent of yours, and let no man ever claim to try to know the heart of someone else. You can't even know your own heart if you believe what's written by the prophet Jeremiah, for he said, "The heart's deceitful above all things, and desperately wicked," and he ends it with a question, "Who can know it?" Who can know it? You can't know it, I can't know it. Man, that's tough. That's hard doctrine. You think you know yourself. Isn't that what Socrates said? Know thyself. You can't do it. Even if you kept all the outward appearances of the commandments and ordinances of God, you've still got a problem with the inward, with the heart. Which is why you need a better righteousness than that which can come of the law. Paul talked about that in the book of Colossians when he went through his little autobiography, if you will, when he said, "Y'all wanna brag about your lineage? All right, let's get started. I'm a Hebrew of the Hebrews, of the tribe of Benjamin. Not only that, I was a Pharisee, the strictest sect of the Pharisees, of the Jews. Not only that, as touching the righteousness concerning the law, I was blameless. I sat at the feet of Gamael and learned all about all the interpretations of the fathers and the rabbis of these commandments, and I did every one of them to the point where, when I saw these Christians out here, it just galled me, so I had to go put them in prison and drag them before the council, have them beaten. I was consenting to Stephen's death. When y'all stoned him, I was there saying, 'Go after him, get him.' And he said, 'All of that?' I put it behind me, and I counted, but done. All of that, that the world would look at and say, 'This is wonderful,' he says, 'it's nothing to me, nothing. My desire is to be found in Christ having his righteousness, a righteousness that's before the law, a righteousness that's beyond the law, and a righteousness that is better than any legal righteousness could be.'" They were righteous before God. If they were truly righteous, God made them righteous, and he gave them strength to walk in the commandments and ordinances of the Lord, and they had no child. What about that? They had no child. My, my, my. Why? Because Elizabeth was barren. They had no child because Elizabeth was barren. And they were now, they both were now well-stricken in years. When I read that, you know what I think about? Abraham and Sarah. Abraham being a hundred, Sarah being ninety, childless. Yet God had promised him and her. And he didn't consider his own body being as dead, nor Sarah's womb, barren womb, and here. These two were in that same situation. And it came to pass that while he executed the priest's office before God in the order of his course, and what that means is that the priests rotated. They rotated, going in and out. It was his custom, according to the custom of his office, his lot was to burn incense when he went into the temple of the Lord. And the whole multitude of the people were praying without at the time of incense. And there appeared to him an angel of the Lord. Remember that word, angel, just means messenger. There appeared unto him a messenger of the Lord standing on the right side of the altar of incense. And when Zacharias saw him, he was troubled. That's a mildly, if a heavenly messenger from God came and stood before you on the right end of this pulpit, you know, saying that he was troubled would be be kind of an understatement, I'm afraid. And indeed, the next phrase tells it all, doesn't it? "And fear fell upon him." Fear fell upon him. Well, he wasn't used to that. He wasn't used to a heavenly messenger coming in there. That didn't happen. Happened to him. And how does he react? Fear fell. The angel said unto him, "Fear not, Zacharias." How many times in the New Testament does that phrase occur? Fear not? A bunch. But yet still, we mortals fear. "Fear not, Zacharias, for thy prayer is heard; and thy wife Elizabeth shall bear thee a son, and thou shalt call his name John." So look at here. The angel said to Zacharias, "Your prayer is heard." I bet he thought, man, it's been a while coming. No, no, in meditation, he might have done it. But right then, I think he was, he was caught up in the fact that a messenger from God was speaking directly to him and telling him exactly what was gonna happen. "Your wife Elizabeth shall bear a son, and thou shalt call his name John." That's right. That may became pre-named. What about it? What about him? "Thou shalt have joy and gladness, and many shall rejoice at his birth; for he shall be great in the sight of the Lord." The angel's giving him a bit of pre-history here, telling him beforehand what's gonna happen. He shall be great in the sight of the Lord. In one place, Jesus looked at the crowd and said, "Old John, what did you go out to see when you went out to it? A prophet? More than a prophet." That's right. "He shall be great in the sight of the Lord; and he shall drink neither wine nor strong drink; and he shall be filled with the Holy Ghost, the Holy Spirit, even from his mother's womb." Now, some people says that that means you shouldn't drink wine or strong drink, but what the Lord was telling us here is that he was a Nazirite from the beginning, from the day of his conception, he was to be a Nazirite. What was a Nazirite? It was one who had declared by a vow his separation unto God. And he didn't cut his hair, he didn't cut his beard, he tasted neither wine nor strong drink. There are a couple of other things on there as well. But that's what he's telling him, saying, "He's gonna be a Nazirite from the beginning; and he shall be filled with the Holy Ghost, the Holy Spirit, even from his mother's womb." We're gonna see that here in a minute. "And many of the children of Israel shall he turn to the Lord their God." And many, he's gonna call, "a generation of vipers." Interesting how that's gonna work out. "And he shall go before him in the spirit and power of Elias, Elijah, to turn the hearts of the fathers to the children and the disobedient to the wisdom of the just, to make ready a people prepared for the Lord." To make ready a people already prepared for the Lord. And Zacharias said unto the angel, "Now, whereby shall I know this? How, how am I gonna know this is the truth? I'm an old man, and my wife's well-stricken in years." He said, "Oh, that sounds good, fella, but I need more. I need more. How am I gonna know that?" The angel answering said unto him, "I am Gabriel that stand in the presence of God, and am sent to speak unto thee and to show thee these glad tidings." All right, you wanted a way to know? Here it is. "Behold, thou shalt be dumb and not able to speak until the day that these things shall be performed; because thou believest not my words, which shall be fulfilled in their season." He said, "All right. You wanna know how you know it? You'll not be able to speak for these nine months till you see it all come to pass." And the people waited for Zacharias and marveled that he carried so long in the temple, that altar incense, he just waves it around a little bit and comes out, but now he's got a conversation here. And when he came out, he could not speak unto them, and they perceived that he'd seen a vision in the temple; for he beckoned unto them and remained speechless. And it came to pass that as soon as the days of his administration were accomplished, he departed to his own house. And after those days, his wife Elizabeth conceived and hid herself five months, saying, "Thus hath the Lord dealt with me in the days wherein he looked on me to take away my reproach among men." And in the sixth month, John, six months in the womb, Gabriel came to Mary, who was to be the mother of Jesus. And Mary arose in those days and went into the hill country with haste into a city of Judah, and entered into the house of Zacharias and saluted Elizabeth. That was her cousin. Read that couple of verses before what we did, where I started there, verse thirty-nine. "And it came to pass that when Elizabeth heard the salutation of Mary, the babe leaped in her womb; and Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Ghost." The babe was already filled with the Holy Ghost. No, it didn't say he'd be filled with the Holy Ghost once he came out of the womb, but from the womb. He heard the voice of the one that was to bear the Messiah, the Anointed, the Savior. He leapt for joy. And she spake out with a loud voice and said, "Blessed art thou among women; and blessed is the fruit of thy womb; and whence is this to me, that the mother of my Lord should come to me?" "The mother of my Lord should come to me; for lo, as soon as the voice of thy salutation sounded in mine ears, the babe leaped in my womb for joy; and blessed is she that believed; for there shall be a performance of those things which were told her from the Lord." Let's skip down here to verse fifty-seven. In this section, we see that John was in the womb of his mother Elizabeth, filled with the Holy Ghost, and even she said, the babe leaped for joy. The one who was to bear his Lord, Elizabeth's Lord, our Lord if we did, had entered, and he perceived him. This, I gotta say this. Don't try to tell me that there has to be a preacher, a man, go out into the world to make sure all of God's children hear what they call the gospel. Who preached the gospel to John the Baptist when he was in the womb of Elizabeth? I'll tell you who, the same one that must declare that gospel, that good news, that word of life to you and to me, and that's Jesus himself. He's the only one who can set that forth. The preacher's there as a teacher. Preacher's there as one with a word, hopefully, of confirmation of what we've already been taught by God. So here, John knew more than most of them today when he was in his mother's womb, 'cause he had had the revelation from God. Remember what Jesus told Peter? Everybody, all the disciples were sitting around there, and he says, Jesus says to them, "Who, who do men say that I am?" Well, Jeremiah, one of the prophets. Elijah. John the Baptist risen from the dead. They say, "John, but whom do you say that I am?" Peter stood up in the midst of them and said, "You are the Christ, you are Messiah, you are the Anointed One, the Son of the living God." And what did Jesus tell him? "Blessed art thou Simon's son of Jonah, Simon bar Jonah; for flesh and blood has not revealed this unto you." What he's saying is, Andrew, John, James, they couldn't tell you this. What he's saying is, you couldn't learn it from Moses or the scribes. What he's saying is, you couldn't learn that in the synagogue. He said, "Flesh and blood didn't reveal it to you, but my Father, which is in heaven, revealed this to you." And brethren, if we have an experience of grace today is because we have experienced the same revelation that Peter did, that Jesus Christ is the only Anointed One, he is the only Messiah, he is the only one who bore the sins of his people and put them away. It's only by revelation that you know it. These same folks that think they've gotta go out and spread what they call the gospel for people couldn't get saved. They like to quote, "Faith cometh by hearing and hearing by the word of God." And they don't mean it. They mean, "Faith cometh by hearing." They mean, "Faith cometh by hearing and hearing by the word of the preacher." Word, word. Basically, two different words translated, word in the New Testament. Word, word, word. This one means spoken word. We could just as easily have said, "Faith cometh by hearing and hearing by the speaking of God, because God must speak life to you." I'm reminded of an incident later in the Gospel of John. When Lazarus dies, and Jesus goes. "Show me where you've made him." They take him to the tomb, and he weeps. "Roll away that stone." And he comes up to him, says, "Lord, he's been in there three days now. He's gonna stink. Roll that stone away." He didn't go up to the entrance of that tomb, step inside and say, "Okay, now, anybody y'all that wanna come, come on." No, he said, "Lazarus, come forth." And none but Lazarus responded. What am I getting at? I'm getting that the religion of Jesus Christ, the revelation of Him and our walking in faith must come by a personal revelation from God to you. The revelation that I hope God gave me won't do for you, and the revelation that you hope that God gave you won't do for me. We have to have our own. But those will unite in one thing, and that's in the person and the work of Jesus Christ. That will be the same in everybody. All right, verse fifty-seven of Luke one. "Now Elizabeth's full time came, that she should be delivered. She brought forth a son; and her neighbors and her cousins heard how the Lord had showed great mercy upon her, and they rejoiced with her." She'd hid herself for a while. I don't believe it was shame. I've heard that set forth, but I don't believe it was. I think she wanted to rejoice in the mercy of God to her and to thank Him for what He had done. And that wasn't a matter of public scrutiny. She wanted to be with her husband, with her baby, even though it was in the womb, and with her Lord, who gave it to her. But now her neighbors and her cousins heard how the Lord had showed this great mercy upon her, and they rejoiced with her. And it came to pass that on the eighth day, they came to circumcise the child. That's according to the law. That's when you did it, on the eighth day, on the male child. They were to be circumcised. Zecharia and Elizabeth, both being descendants of Aaron, they're gonna follow that. And that was also the time that the Jews named the child. Still is, by the way. They give a male child its name, full name, on, on the day of the circumcision. "They called him Zecharias after the name of his father; and his mother answered and said, 'Not so, but he should be called John.'" Now these folks, I'm sure, meant well. Zack Jr. there. Mama said, "No, no, he should be called John." And they, although she didn't, as it were, cast her pearls before swine and say, "An angel told Zecharias that." No, no, they knew that, they wouldn't believe that. "They said unto her," that's her neighbors and her cousins, "There's none of thy kindred that's called by this name." You know, you name somebody after a name that was in your family. Mine goes back to my third great-grandfather. But there was no Johns in this family. And they made signs to his father. How would he have him called? And he asked for a writing table. And he wrote, saying, and look at this. Not we'll call his name John, not, I'm gonna name him John. His name is John. His name is John. It was John when the angel told him about it. It was John before then. It was John in eternity, when God purposed all of this and predestinated. And he's just telling you what it is, already was. He wasn't trying to bring in anything new and different, just tell them what it is. His name is John, and they marveled off. "Man, what is he talking about?" His name is John. And his mouth was opened immediately, and his tongue loosed, and he spake, and he praised God. Now, hmm. What did the people think? Fear came upon all that dwelt round about them. That this man that had been dumb for nine months and a few days, when he wrote out, "His name is John", he could speak. And the first thing he did was not thank everybody for coming or say, "Oh, what a wonderful son I've got. Man, that's a pretty baby." He praised God for what He'd done for him, that He'd given him that son, that He'd revealed that gift to him before He gave it. But the purpose was there from all eternity. And fear came on all them that dwelled about, round about them. And all these things were noise abroad throughout all the hill country of Judea. Man, they couldn't let it rest. That, that, they're telling that all over the country. Oh, Zecharias, he's a daddy. Well, he's dead. He's, he, he turned dumb there in the temple. Yeah, but he can talk now. What happened? Of all things, they're calling that baby John. No one in the family named John ever that we know of. "And all they that heard them laid them up in their hearts, saying, 'What manner of child shall this be?'" Man, this gotta be something special. "Little did they know..." How special? "Little did they know..." "And the hand of the Lord was with him." I wonder. Well, if I can get to the right place. Now I'm gonna save that. "And Zecharia, his father, was filled with the Holy Ghost and prophesied, and prophesied, saying what? Blessed be the Lord God of Israel." You got a lot of people supposedly prophesying today. How many of them? Listen to me now, how many of them? Start off saying, "Blessed be the Lord God of Israel." No, it's... This gonna happen, that's gonna happen. Look over yonder. No, no. First thing Zecharia said, "Blessed be the Lord God of Israel." Why? "For he has visited and redeemed his people." It's one thing to think about the natural blessings that God bestows on countries, particularly on the land of Israel, there was much, wasn't it? That doesn't matter. He visited and redeemed his people. I've used this illustration before, and if I live, I'll use it again, probably. It's interesting how people think about redeem. If I go upon my watch and get a ticket on it, I can redeem it, can't I? It's mine, I put it out there, and I get it back. Jesus was giving the people a lecture, the choice of God. He was giving the people, and God purposed that they fall in爱. And in that falling, they became sinners, come forth from the womb, speaking lives, conceived in sin, shaping in iniquity. But because they were His, not Satan's, they were His. He sent forth His Son. He visited His people. He sent them forth to dwell among them and to redeem them. In other words, He's gonna satisfy the debt. He's gonna satisfy the justice that was due every one of those children. Blessed be the God, the Lord God of Israel, who hath visited his and redeemed his people and hath raised up a horn of salvation for us in the house of his servant David. After the flesh, Jesus was of the lineage of David. John was of the lineage of Aaron. As he spake by the mouth of his holy prophets, which have been since the world began, that we should be saved from our enemies and from the hand of all that haters, to perform the mercy promised to our fathers and to remember his holy covenant, the oath which he swore to our Father Abraham, that he would grant unto us, that we being delivered out of the hand of our enemies might serve him without fear and holiness and righteousness before him all the days of our lives. Now he's gonna address John, "And thou child shall be called the prophet of the highest; for thou shalt go before the face of the Lord to prepare his ways, to give knowledge of salvation unto his people by the remission of their sins through the tender mercy of our God, whereby the day spring from on high, hath visited us, to give light to them that sit in darkness and in the shadow of death, to guide our feet into the way of peace." God's covenant with Abraham. The oath which he swore to our fathers, our Father Abraham. He would make of him a great nation. But his seed, not seeds as of many, but seed as of one, Jesus. His seed would be great, mighty. Look here. Under the, to perform the mercy promised to our fathers and to remember his covenant, his holy covenant, the oath which he swore to our Father Abraham, that he would grant us, that he would grant unto us. Now think about this for just a moment. Abraham, it was four hundred and thirty years before the law. So there was no law in this covenant. He would grant unto us. Words are important. If I grant something to you, I'm giving it to you. But more than that, it's like a land grant. All heard of that, haven't we? Back in the day, go out in the wilderness or actually in, in, have lands given by the government. That was payment at times. Lands in Indiana, Illinois, were given as payment to soldiers in the War of eighteen twelve. In the Revolutionary War, they were given lands. They were given land grants, unexplored, un, un, uh, developed lands. They granted to you, which meant it was yours. Nobody could take it away from you. It was a grant. It's more than just a gift. It was from those that had the right to give it to someone else. God has the right to grant to us whatever He pleases. And in this case, it is that we being delivered out of the hand of our enemies, plural, the hand of our enemies. After He delivers us, He grants this to us, that we might serve Him without fear. I wanna just briefly quote two other texts. It's not by fear that we serve God. Perfect love casteth out fear. Can you tell me a love more perfect than God's? You can't, 'cause there is none who is as perfect as He is. Well, we serve God. It's not for fear that He's gonna beat us if we don't. That's legal. What the law say? Get to obey it. You're under the curse if you don't. Do right. No, no. Perfect love casteth out all fear. And now, we serve God not in the oldness of the letter, that's the law, but in what? Newness of life. Newness of life. Newness of life. Ye who are dead are now made alive by Christ Jesus, just like Lazarus was. You heard His voice. You heard His voice when you were dead. He came forth. Because where the word of the King is, there's power. That He would grant unto us, that we being delivered out of the hand of our enemies might serve Him with fear. How? In holiness and righteousness before Him? Well, you might say, well, that lets me out. I think I still sin every now and then. Not in that new life. That which is born in the flesh is flesh, and brotherhood sins, and I hate it. But that which is born in the spirit, the spirit, Jesus said. And it is as perfect as God Himself is and as holy as He is and as righteous as He is, because it's His seed all the days of our life. Two more things in what Zecharia said here. And then hopefully all sit down. Thou shalt, thou child shall be called the prophet of the highest; for thou shalt go before the face of the Lord to prepare his ways. To save folks from their sins, no. It's not what John came for. Listen to the language again. To give knowledge of salvation. Knowledge of salvation. In other words, he's confirming that the Lord has been gracious to his people and come as a witness to that. And as we shall see a little bit later, he will dip them in the water because of their hope through the tender mercy of God. The tender mercy of God. Not just mercy, but a tender mercy. People all the time want to get you to fear God. There is a reverence and a fear that should be in our lives because we know what God is and we know what we are. It's a fearful thing to fall into the hands of the living God. Paul told us in the book of Hebrews. But remember, perfect love casteth out fear. And it's by the tender mercies of God that's given to us. It's a mercy that we're here, that God hadn't just killed us. It's a mercy that rain falls and the sun shines. But it's not a tender mercy. Tender mercies are reserved for, by God, for his children. And he comes to his people with tokens of his love, and he gives them a taste. And they know his kindness. And they know, as it were, his heart. And they know that he has redeemed them, he has visited them, and that in his light they see light. It may be dim, but it's there. Every one of God's children whose eyes are open. What Job say, I'm the man who God has opened his eyes. My eyes aren't shut anymore. I can see. And the light that is in Christ Jesus, the light of that light shines to us, shines in us, and shines out of us as he is pleased to give us more and more as we go through this life. I hope that the Lord touch each and every one of us with that. We might see and rejoice in the beauty of his free and full salvation. Let's bow together in dismissal. Lord, we pray that thou would dismiss us with thy blessing, that thou would give us thy tender mercies for our journeys, however long or short they may be, and that thou would hold us in thy hand and bring us back together, keep us in peace by thy love for thy great name sake, whose name we ask. Amen.